Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. And my colleagues on council. I want to welcome you to our public work session for September 12th, 2023. I would now ask my colleagues to note your attendance electronically.
Seven members of City Council present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I would now ask for our interim city manager, Ms. Terry. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor of Portsmouth family. This evening, we're going to start with a presentation of our economic development update by our Mr. Brian Donahue, Director of Economic Development.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, City Manager, City Attorney. It's my pleasure to be before you today to provide an economic development update and share some of the progress and activities that are underway in the city of Portsmouth. We have a lot going on and I'm going to try to capture everything as much as I can for you this afternoon. Let's make sure we're moving forward here. I'd like to start out, if I can, with just really reviewing what economic development is and to summarize what we're working towards here as a department on behalf of the city of Portsmouth. Economic development consists of programs, policies, and activities that seek to improve the economic well-being and quality of life for a community by creating and retaining jobs and providing a stable tax base. Ultimately, economic development is a revenue strategy for a community generating additional tax dollars from new business investment. The source is the International Economic Development Council, which is kind of the gold standard, if you will, for our profession as economic development practitioners. Some of the guiding principles that we follow as a department, we are always working to bring new business in and promote Portsmouth as a location for economic investment and not just any location, but the ideal location in Hampton Roads in the state of Virginia. We work to help existing local businesses solve problems that would cause them to fail, close, or potentially relocate. Business retention is a primary objective of ours. It's important to retain the businesses that exist in the Portsmouth business community. We're also focused at helping those local businesses grow and expand, and that's part of that business retention that we seek to achieve. We're also working to help entrepreneurs and new firms start up and access resources that they may need to succeed with a new business venture. We'll talk more about this as well going forward. We do also work with our partners to prepare Portsmouth residents for available careers and connect businesses to skilled jobs and build the pipeline for a future workforce. In August, Ms. Nala Salee of our Portsmouth At Work program was before you to share a workforce development update, some of the exciting things that they're working to do. Traditionally, workforce development hasn't been a component of economic development, but today it is. I think we've all realized, coming out of the pandemic, how essential and crucial it is to have a pipeline of candidates for these jobs that we're seeking to bring in. And then lastly, and really the most important part of these principles, is improving the quality of life for our citizens, and that's all citizens in Portsmouth. Each one of these previous bullet points feeds directly into that. So we've been working over really the last five years, six years now, to build momentum here in Portsmouth as it relates to economic development. You can see here on the chart, we've had a number of major projects that have been announced. Over $1.5 billion in new investment has occurred in Portsmouth between 2017 and 2022. You're witnessing a lot of that now. Some major projects and new businesses coming to the city. The landscape in Portsmouth is changing. There's more to come, and we'll talk a little bit about that this afternoon. That $1.5 billion generates projected $19.5 million in revenue, new revenue, to the city annually. We've also impacted over 6,300 jobs. That's newly created positions and positions that we've saved and retained in the city of Portsmouth that could have gone elsewhere or lost altogether. 2022, we had another good year here in Portsmouth. You'll note there was a little bit of a dip that was mostly related to projects that were paused due to some of the economic uncertainties that were occurring with respect to inflation, higher interest rates. So there's some projects that have paused. We're seeing some movement on that now. But what I will share with the council is we've identified a new baseline in Portsmouth for annual investment. That's $100 million, and we expect to exceed that every year. That's what our department has set as the minimum investment level. And I'm pleased to say that as we are now in the final quarter of the calendar year, we'll be exceeding that $100 million yet again. Exact numbers to share with you once we complete the calendar year, but we're on track to continue that progress and working now to increase it going forward. One of the ways we're doing that is increased marketing efforts, doing many things that we've been doing historically but changing how we're doing them, and then adding some new tools and resources to the toolbox. We are going to be launching a strategic and targeted marketing campaign to promote Portsmouth again as the ideal location for business in Hampton Roads, Virginia, and beyond. We've been working with the city's marketing department and the Davis Agency, which is our ad agency of record here in the city, on a new video series, a Why Portsmouth campaign, if you will, to really provide some testimonials, some case studies for why businesses should choose Portsmouth as their new location. So we are going to be working to identify a diverse group of businesses that really are representative of how you can be successful in Portsmouth. We have a lot of good stories about businesses that have started and launched in Portsmouth or growing in Portsmouth and expanding to other markets as well, and we're going to showcase those. We are going to be launching a new targeted social media campaign utilizing Facebook, LinkedIn, YouTube videos to really help promote all the wonderful things that are happening in the city. Print advertisement is something we've done, and we're really working to ensure that we're in the right markets, in the right publications, based on our targeted industry sectors, which I'll share with you as well. Email distributions, we've previously done a survey. This was one of the top ways that our residents identified as their preference for obtaining information was through city email. So we are going to be working to make sure we're distributing information to them via email as well. Signage, billboards, bus stops, we're looking to promote all of our programs throughout the community and beyond with new signage. And of course, website updates, which will be always ongoing to make sure that we have the freshest, newest information available to the public when they visit our website. So which industries are we targeting in Portsmouth? We have several, and the way that we've gone about identifying these, it's been very strategic. It has been an effort that ties into some of the regional economic development efforts, and I'll run through those with you. These are all industries that we've identified to be of high-growth potential, high volume, where we're looking at generating high capital investment, job creation, and these are industries that we have existing here in Portsmouth, as well as some new industries that we're looking to attract and recruit as well. So maritime is one, distribution and logistics, offshore wind, unmanned systems, this is becoming more prevalent, I think, overall in society, but certainly from an industrial standpoint. Our region is hosting businesses in the unmanned vessels, drone industries as well, so we'll be looking at that, and I'll provide some other information as well. Advanced manufacturing, small business and startups, this is a major focus of ours. I mean, small businesses are really the heartbeat of Portsmouth, so we'll be working to continue supporting and growing those. And then last, not industry per se, but residential development is going to be very important to what we're doing from an economic development standpoint for the city. Starting with maritime, I'm going to give you some additional details about some of the activities and what we're seeing right now in the marketplace. We're really working to leverage Portsmouth's reputation as a world-class maritime community. Our history has, you know, strong ties from the start to the maritime industry, and we're working to capture that blue economy. So we're looking at ship repair and fabrication, preservation, performance coatings, marine systems, and marine construction as well. Just a couple of projects to share with you. Some of these you may have seen as you've driven through the city, activity at the sites. We've been working closely with Fairlead Integrated. You can literally look out your window here behind me and see some of the activity that's happening there on Lincoln Street, the former Ocean Marine yacht facility. Fairlead is doing some very amazing things there, supporting our national defense industry. So they are currently fabricating carrier components in partnership with Huntington Ingalls Shipbuilding. Those are being transported via barge for assembly in Newport News. They're doing the same thing with the new Columbia-class submarine fleet. So several hundred jobs have come to Portsmouth as they've grown. This is a Portsmouth-based headquartered company that has grown in Portsmouth, and they're growing just across the marina here. Crofton Industries, another Portsmouth-based and headquartered company, they are located on Harper Avenue, just south of the Portsmouth Marine Terminal. They're currently upgrading and overhauling their entire waterfront bulkhead. We've assisted with a grant, and they're looking to create several dozen new jobs, several million dollars in investment as they've overhauled their working waterfront to support the marine construction industry. WF McGann is a neighbor of theirs in West Norfolk, again, a Portsmouth-based business. They've been here for over 75 years, and they're expanding their headquarters in the West Norfolk community right now, doubling their footprint, looking to double their staffing size, and doing some pretty amazing work, not just in the region, but beyond in, again, marine construction. And then the last is international flooring and protective coatings. They have purchased a former shipyard on Shipwright Street. We did assist them with a Port Host Community grant, and they are also overhauling their property to serve the shipbuilding industry, but also the offshore wind industry. So waterfront property, they're working to overhaul all of their facilities and bulkhead. So we're talking about several million dollars in investment, over 150 new jobs potentially created there. So a lot of activity in the maritime industry, it's very strong, it's continuing to grow, and we're working as hard as we can to accommodate it here in the city. Distribution and logistics, you know, the port is extremely present here in Portsmouth, probably more so than anywhere else in the region. So we're really looking to amplify our location in the center of the mid-Atlantic region. You know, we have access to incredible transportation infrastructure, and our proximity to the port really puts us in a wonderful position to take advantage of this industry and continue to grow it. So we're focused on port-centric warehousing and distribution opportunities. We've worked very closely with the port over the last several years to identify sites and locations for new investment, and it's a managed process. We're really having to be very selective with our industrial sites, ensuring that the remaining few that we have, and there are not many, that we're bringing them to their highest and best use. I think our largest property here currently in Portsmouth, that's industrially zoned, is about 20 acres. So we really have to be careful and selective with what we are working to attract and locate on those few sites. But we do have sites, and we are marketing those heavily, and there's considerable interest, not just in Virginia, but markets to the southeast and northeast as well. Some current projects you may be aware of, some new projects that have just broken ground, PepsiCo Frito-Lay on Court Street in the Port Center Commerce Park. You may have seen some of their trucks parked out front recently. They are going to be occupying and beginning their operations here this fall. They're staffing up now. There's been a lot of work to overhaul the building, but very, very excited to have their distribution facility serving Hampton Roads and beyond centered right here in Portsmouth. I was even more excited that that building really never even hit the market. The previous tenant, Massimo Zanetti, relocated and consolidated their facilities to Suffolk, but before that building really even got on the market, we had a tenant lined up, which I think says a lot about Portsmouth and our location, the ability to serve the distribution industry. Eunice, that's a transportation company. They are currently developing a 17-acre property immediately adjacent to Virginia International Gateway, Port of Virginia's terminal on Wild Duck Lane. They're constructing a new $20 million, 72,000-square-foot transloading facility. They will bring in the 20-foot equivalent unit containers directly through the gate across the street, VIG, into the Eunice facility. They'll offload them into 53-foot trailers, which will head out to distribution centers throughout Virginia and beyond. We worked very closely with the port to land this deal. I don't think you can find a better location anywhere on the East Coast for distribution than immediately next door to the Port of Virginia. So really excited about this. It will have over 30 positions coming with it as a result, and they're one of the top operators in the country when it comes to distribution and logistics, again, coming to Portsmouth. Lastly, Southeastern Freight Lines, they've been present here in Portsmouth for a long time. They've had a terminal on Elmhurst Lane. If you've driven down Elmhurst lately, there's a lot of construction activity underway. They're tripling the size of their facility, so you'll have new capacity there. We've been working closely with them and working with the port to promote that available square footage that they're going to be bringing to the market. So very excited about that. I'm even more excited about offshore wind, and I'd like to talk to you a little bit about what we have going on right now in Portsmouth today. We are very uniquely positioned to be the East Coast hub for the offshore wind industry. There are more than a dozen projects in the development stages up and down the East Coast at this very moment, and Portsmouth is really probably the prime location for supporting the industry's growth. There's going to be tremendous opportunities for foreign direct investment in the manufacturing side of this industry, as well as the local supply chain operations and continued maintenance as well. Portsmouth Marine Terminal is currently transitioning to be a hub for offshore wind. Dominion Energy has signed a long-term lease with the Port of Virginia for approximately half, 80 acres of the property to serve as a staging area for offshore wind construction. The Coastal Virginia Offshore Wind Project, which is currently under development off the coast of Virginia Beach, will be staged out of Portsmouth. This is the premier port facility on the East Coast for offshore wind. Offshore wind turbines are extremely large components and assemblies. Here in Portsmouth, we have some natural and physical infrastructure features that allow for us to accommodate all of that movement and flow. The northeastern markets, where there are a lot of projects, have overhead obstructions with the bridges that are present there. With our tunnel systems, we do not, so we can move this cargo, these components, very freely. We also have very wide and deep channels. So very excited about what Dominion Energy is doing. They're investing over $220 million in overhauling the terminal at Portsmouth Marine Terminal, and they will begin receiving components, the first components, to come in for the offshore wind project in October. So I just met with the port today and learned of that schedule. The construction of the wind farm will commence in 2024, will be fully complete by 2026. This is an exciting time, not just for Portsmouth, but all of Hampton Roads, the state of Virginia, as this new industry, really a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, has come to our city, and we're ready to support it. Another project that will be located at Portsmouth Marine Terminal is Siemens Gemesa Renewable Energy. They are looking to construct a wind turbine blade facility. So working to finish turbine blades that will go out, not just to the Seaval Wind Turbine Farm off Virginia Beach, but up and down the East Coast. They are one of the leading suppliers and manufacturers of wind turbines globally. Unmanned Systems, this is a newer industry to the region. We're looking to leverage our existing maritime and defense industries and bring additional unmanned systems businesses to the city. We have worked over the years with a group that was based here originally in Portsmouth, Simmons Incorporated. They have an unmanned systems division. We're working to recruit more businesses like Simmons to Portsmouth. And again, we're looking at autonomous vessels, drones, submersibles. These are things that we're well-suited to accommodate here in Portsmouth. There's a robust research and development industry. In fact, at the Tri-City Center, the Suffolk-Chesapeake Line, where you have V-Mask, they're actually studying, educating college students in this industry. So there's a growing ecosystem here where we are well-positioned again to take advantage of it. Advanced manufacturing, Portsmouth, we have a very strong logistics infrastructure and, of course, a dedicated and skilled workforce. So again, we're a premier location for a variety, really, of many manufacturing industries. We're really focused on the small and mid-size manufacturers. That's really what we can accommodate, and I think it's a niche market. A couple of examples of that, Collins Machine Works, which is in the Port Center Industrial Park, doing amazing things for our energy industry, the defense industry there. They're expanding to a site that our Economic Development Authority has sold to them on Fifth Street. So they're in the process of looking and expanding, doubling their capacity there. Another is Lynx Industry. They're a manufacturer of rigid duck work. If you've ever been to a Five Guys restaurant, the red duck work that you see there on the ceiling is manufactured here in Portsmouth by Lynx Industries. They've just announced, as of last week, that they are expanding their facility to add additional square footage, additional jobs as well. I mentioned small business and startups. We're really serious about supporting our small business community and really the entrepreneurs that are looking to launch and start a new business in the city. We are ensuring that we're accessible to those individuals, that we have services available to support them. If it's not something we can provide directly, we are working with partner organizations to make sure that those resources are available to them. Some of those would include Bloom Co. Working, the In-Q Hub, Black Brand, the SBA, and the Chamber of Commerce, which operates the Small Business Development Center. Our Economic Development Authority in Portsmouth has been very focused on this as well. They've created several new business investment grant programs recently, including microgrants of anywhere from $2,000 to $5,000 for new and expanding businesses. Last year, I'm excited to report that we provided 44 businesses over $226,000 in funding to support their growth in Portsmouth. Very pleased to report that 93% of those were minority women-owned businesses as well. So something we're really working hard to do, to ensure that we're accessible, that these resources are accessible to all of the Portsmouth community. And then, of course, working to strengthen our relationships with any organization in this entrepreneurial ecosystem that we feel can support our business community. These are some ribbon cuttings. You know, we like to dedicate, I think, our Friday morning on most any given week to opening new businesses here in Portsmouth. So this is just a sampling of some recent ribbon cuttings that we've had here in Portsmouth. Many different types of businesses, healthcare, nonprofits, clothing stores, microbreweries, restaurants. I mean, these are businesses that I think are critical to our quality of life, and we're working to help them locate and grow in the city. I spoke about residential development earlier. I just want to touch on that once again. I think it's very clear that the availability of a modern and affordable housing stock is essential to a community's ability to attract and maintain a local workforce to support these industries that we've been talking about. I'm pleased to share, there's currently over 1,000 new units under development in the city, throughout the city, I think in each corner. There's new residential development going up. It's single-family housing, it's multifamily housing, it is market-rate housing, it's affordable housing. We have housing product for anybody who wants to locate in Portsmouth, and it's quality housing. There is a demand for existing housing in the city. I've spoken before about the need for increased density, certainly in specific areas of the city, including downtown. We'll have some projects coming before you, I think, in the near future, that will be asking for that density through their use permit process. We had a project recently, just to give you an example, that obtained their financing approval in the Churchland community, and the market study that was done as a part of that process identified that in addition to the 232 units that they were developing, there was demand for another 800 units in just the Churchland section of Portsmouth alone. The demand is there. We are competing with our neighboring localities, but I think we're heading in the right direction here, and you'll see some additional projects coming before you very soon that will be evidence of that. If I can transition just a little bit, I want to talk about our Economic Development Authority and some of the strategic initiatives that they've been undertaking. Our EDA Chair, Mr. Malcolm Mitchell, is here this afternoon. The EDA has really taken it upon themselves to do some exciting things. We are really being strategic again with how we're approaching our work. We've identified some key focus areas for the EDA to begin investing some of their resources and abilities. The first is the Innovation District. We're also looking at the Craddock community, if you're familiar with Afton Square, which I'll talk about in just a moment. And then the Entertainment District, looking to build what has already started out there. And the downtown waterfront. We're working to identify key buildings and sites to assemble, in some cases, removing blighting influences, properties that may have sat vacant for years. We're working to negotiate with the property owners to acquire and tear those down to make them ready for development, or if those properties have just been sitting, but we think there's the potential to reuse those, we're looking to do that as well. Ultimately, taking the initiative on our own to create the environment we want to see. And the goal here is to foster, encourage private investment. We want to get these properties back on the tax rolls so they're contributing. The Innovation District, you can see here on the PowerPoint, we have a number of properties that are publicly controlled, both EDA and city-owned properties in the district. There's also a rendering of, you know, potentially what some of those vacant properties could look like in the future. We are looking to acquire additional properties in the Innovation District, and we are working with, again, the private development community to take some of these vacant sites and have them developed. We do have a 50-unit multifamily apartment community, Bane's Point, which the City Council has approved a use permit for, for 50 affordable housing units. That's in the Innovation District. We have another project on High Street, a townhome community, 52 townhomes, King's Landing, that has also received recently a conditional use permit. So things are happening in the Innovation District, and this is all while the study is still being developed. The EDA, after some requests from the Craddock community, has gone into Craddock and begun acquiring some blighted commercial properties in Afton Square. So we're right now working to assemble those sites. You can see on the screen, we have somewhat of a land banking situation here, working to remove some blight, and then looking at going out for a public solicitation for redevelopment, revitalization opportunities very soon. So stay tuned on Craddock, and I think there's quite a bit to happen there. The Entertainment District, there's a lot of interest around, obviously, Rivers Casino. Based on the performance since its opening, we've just seen that interest increase. And what we're seeing right now, it's a lot of retail interest, restaurant dining options. Hospitality is a major interest as well. We've been speaking with a number of groups that are in each of those sectors about where we put them, and there are many conversations happening right now. And there are many conversations happening right now. We're very excited about the hotel that we do believe the casino will be moving forward with here very soon. So more to come on that. But all indications are they are moving forward with that plan on a faster schedule than what was originally anticipated. But in addition to that, we know we need more hotel rooms in Portsmouth. So we're working to identify the other locations where those hotels will go. And then last but not least, is our Downtown Waterfront. I think that everybody's very aware of the multiple studies that have been done going way back to the early 2000s. There was some initial progress that was made at that time. In fact, a developer was identified. But we fell victim to the economic crisis of the early 2000s and the resulting recession. There's been a renewed focus and desire, I believe, on the City Council. I know it has been a focus of our EDA on moving this back to the forefront and reinvigorating this process for seeing the waterfront redeveloped. When we talk about the waterfront, we're really talking about two different sites, two different phases. The first is what we've referred to as Crawford Bay. That's what's the former Holiday Inn site, I think, is historically how it's been referred to. That's about a six-acre site. We feel that that's development-ready right now. We do have an issue of a parking garage that needs to be addressed, but we believe that through the development process, we can address that. The Visitor Center, the former Visitor Center was demolished just a couple of weeks ago, which is a great sign of progress. If you drive by today, it looks ready to go. Civic Complex, City Hall, the Municipal Center, we feel like that is a little bit further off. There are some things we need to work through that we're all very well aware of, but we think that's a later phase. Now that being said, we think the time is right to begin the process of moving forward towards the redevelopment of these properties. So what the EDA has done, has engaged a consulting firm to conduct a new market study to analyze the potential development scenarios that could occur on the property and provide an assessment of the feasibility of that. In addition to investigating the economic and fiscal impacts that could come from a project of some magnitude. And we are working in essence to get towards a public solicitation, which is the route that this will likely need to go. So as part of that process, initially, there's going to be a need for some stakeholder engagement. And we'll be working with the consultant, working with the City Council, the Economic Development Authority, city staff, to begin the process of defining what the vision is for Portsmouth's waterfront. That will be an ongoing process, so obviously more to come on that. Also looking to identify some of the existing conditions that need to be considered and how we overcome those, whether it's a parking garage, other municipal facilities, utilities, things of that nature. Moving into a later task, we'll be looking to do an evaluation of proposed developments, determining the support of, supportable development, doing some site planning, feasibility studies, fiscal impact studies, to really understand what the site can support. The third task will be the development of recommendations for funding, financing and delivery of a project. So really looking at the city's capacity to participate potentially in a project, what the private development community may need to bring, to really have an understanding of how we would achieve this ultimately. And then fourth and lastly, would be the preparation of a request for proposal solicitation that would be put out for development interest. The timeline for this process, you can see it's already started. So we're currently working with AECOM to assess the current conditions that exist along the waterfront. The stakeholder engagement will begin very, very soon. In October, we'll move into the evaluation of the development program, wrapping up in December, and then begin developing an implementation strategy for, you know, how this property that we have here along the waterfront in Portsmouth can be redeveloped. And then lastly, the fourth task, which we project to occur now in about February, would be the preparation of an RFP and framework for that to identify, again, the vision that the City Council is looking for, as well as the criteria that we'd be looking at for selecting a potential development partner. So all in all, a six-month process is what we're looking at. And if we can certainly accelerate that, come in sooner, we'll work to achieve that. The ultimate goal is to be ready for when the market is right and when the economy begins to turn, to be ready to have something out in the street for the development community to respond to. And we think that six months is that window. And that's what we're working towards. This is your Economic Development Team. We are currently an office of five. We're in the hiring process right now, so ultimately there will be nine team members. We just had two positions that closed on Sundays. We'll be interviewing candidates for those. But really, a dedicated group of individuals here. I can't take credit for anything. It's all them and their work and their efforts. They show up every day looking to make Portsmouth a better place for not just our business community, but our residents as well. And lastly, this is how you can find us. So if you are in need of our resources, we are at 200 High Street, Suite 200 and Suite 201. Website addresses are here on the screen, but even easier for those of you who have a device, you can scan the QR code and it will take you right to our page. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. We look forward to working with you all to bring some of these exciting things to fruition in the city.
We do have a couple of questions from our colleagues. Councilman Hugel, you have the floor, sir.
All right, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Donahue, thanks for the very comprehensive brief on the heels of Ms. Saleh coming to brief us on workforce development at our last work session. A couple of comments and maybe a couple of suggestions. So I was at Naval Engineering Conference last week. Navy leadership that's building and fixing ships has fully committed to additive manufacturing. So that's 3D printing with metal to build ship parts. And so as we're looking at kind of subsets of your targeted industries, finding folks, particularly folks that might be interested in landing in our Innovation District that do additive manufacturing is an opportunity, particularly since we sit in the middle of all these shipyards. So with that as a segue into noting that all of your targeted industries require trade skill people, it was important to get Ms. Saleh's brief about workforce development. And because I participate in the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee, I'm concerned that we prepare our students in those trade skill areas that we need. And so ensuring that you all are involved with the CTE crew at Portsmouth Public Schools to kind of give them industry demand signal in those advanced manufacturing areas, additive manufacturing and laser cutting and 3D printing and CAD and all of those things. Those are the kinds of skills that we need to help our students grow into. Because all these industries aren't going to come here if we don't have people that can go to work for them right out of the starting blocks. So now to a couple of suggestions. So we're losing older residents to Norfolk to Harbor's Edge. We need, seems to me, a Harbor's Edge kind of facility here in Portsmouth that will allow our aging citizens to age gracefully and eventually into whatever assisted care they need in a facility like that. It's a shame to watch our Portsmouth neighbors move across the river because there's no place like that for them on our side of the river. And then the other need that we have is the need to have a baby in Portsmouth. If you're not on active duty, you can't have a baby in Portsmouth. You can have a baby in North Suffolk, you can have a baby in Chesapeake in Norfolk, but no longer can you have a baby in Portsmouth. And so we need to either work with our existing health profession folks or see if we can attract some new health professionals that will work with us so that if you live in Portsmouth, you can have a baby in Portsmouth and be assured that you'll be well taken care of. Thanks again for your brief.
Thank you, and I appreciate your recommendations, so we'll be working on each. Thank you.
Councilman Tillage, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Donahue, thank you for your presentation. I'm going to have a couple of questions and statements as well. Number one, to piggyback off of Councilman Hugel in regards to the healthcare industry, I think that that definitely should be a key focus of ours because not just, I being able to have a baby in the city of Portsmouth, when you think about cancer screenings, radiology, and then unfortunately, you have HIV STDs and things that run rapid in communities. And so I think having a healthcare partner that will help to bridge these gaps, especially when we think about healthcare disparities in our low-income areas. A lot of that comes with education, but also having access to those facilities. And right now, we just have Maryview Hospital. I have a question in regards to the offshore wind. So you mentioned Dominion Energy and Siemens Gamesa. So I have a question in regards to Siemens Gamesa. So in some news articles that have been posted in the recent months, it mentions the financial burdens that Siemens Gamesa is experiencing. And so, let me find my notes. Anyway, oh, here we go. So headlines from Wall Street Journal, Siemens Gamesa, what Siemens Energy shares plummet after withdrawal fiscal 2023 profit guidance. And then The Economist posted Siemens wind turbine business blown off course. Do we have any updates with this project in Portsmouth and how that's transpiring? Of course, with it being on the port, you know, we also have other red tape that we have to navigate. But is there any updates on the status of them being able to move forward with this project?
Sure. Great, great question. And yes, it has recently been disclosed that they've had some financial hurdles to overcome. I think that's related to some of their existing components that they have out in the field, where they have some liabilities associated with those. I don't have an update for you that I can share publicly at this time. There are some, obviously, issues that they're working to address from a financial standpoint. They are still, even given, you know, what information you just shared, they are the leading offshore wind company globally. And I do believe it's something that they will overcome. In new industries, typically, things like this occur from time to time. They are under a lease agreement with the Port of Virginia, so they are committed to being in Portsmouth from that standpoint. But what the impact will be, we don't know just yet. My immediate expectation is that, you know, there may be some initial delays to, you know, their project. But they are the supplier and under contract for Dominion Energy's project. So those 176 turbines that are going to be constructed off the coast of Virginia will be Siemens Gamesa turbines. So, you know, we're still working through the details, but we're in communication with them. We expect, you know, at this point in time, everything to move forward and maybe at a delayed pace.
My next question is regarding the page titled Residential Developments. So here, we've mentioned a lot of market rate housing, but also some affordable housing. Is EDA in communication with PRHA when we're discussing affordable housing options? Because I know there's a lot of HUD funding that's available for affordable housing, but then also to Councilman Hugel's point, when it comes to senior living, all of that kind of wraps together.
We are. From the standpoint that we've helped to identify, you know, potential sites. We've looked at our portfolio of inventory of EDA-owned property, city-owned property to identify any locations that may be suitable, just in terms of location and size to accommodate a project. Our inventory has gotten much less in size than what it was historically. So we've been working to get properties in the tax rolls. So there's not a lot of real estate that we have to support that effort. But we are communicating with them. In fact, I had a conversation with Mr. Bland of the Housing Authority just on Monday about future projects and opportunities. I know senior housing is a major focus of theirs. So if there's a way for us to partner and support them, I think we'd certainly be looking to do that. We're also seeing a lot of interest from the private development community. PRHA is a fantastic partner, but I think it says a lot to have private development groups coming to Portsmouth looking to invest their dollars as well because that gets us that much further, that much more quickly too. So we're really looking to support both sides of the affordable housing sector.
Got you. Because as a person that is actually actively looking for real estate, housing is definitely much higher than it was prior to the pandemic. And the supply is not there. The demand is very high, but the supply is not. And so I think it's very imperative that we work together to find affordable and market rate housing that works for the entire city. Because as we all know, affordability means something different to every household. So kind of maybe taking like a workforce housing approach option. My next question, well, it's not only a question, it's more of a statement. When we talk about on Page 19, the Downtown Waterfront Redevelopment Project, I see that you all provided a timeline here. And I have some questions in regards to timelines, but I'll send those questions via email. A couple of months ago, we, requests were made for City Council and EDA to meet also with PRHA, but first for Council to have a retreat amongst ourselves for us to discuss these issues. I think we're still waiting on MWBE program analysis. And I think that that would be very imperative for us to have prior to entering into discussions and proposals for the redevelopment of the city's most, the city's largest economic development project. And so if we can get an update on the MWBE program, I think that that is very, very vital in this conversation when we're talking about procurements for waterfront redevelopment projects, large industries coming into the city of Portsmouth, especially in a city such as Portsmouth, having the demographics that we have. So if we can go ahead and have city managers send out a survey to Council for us to have this retreat, to discuss City Council's visions for economic development and housing, for us then to be able to go meet with EDA and with PRHA. Both bodies, EDA and PRHA, have requested meetings with City Council. And so I think that before we even enter into this timeline of six months, that we as Council have that conversation amongst ourselves. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Donahue, as I, as I listen to your report, I'm always concerned about equity. And I noticed that nowhere in your report was there any issue that was addressing disparities or equity. And so I'm curious, what is the plan for addressing disparities and equity within economic development and EDA?
Great question. I think that ties a little bit into Councilman Tillage's prior question. We are currently, I say we, the EDA, are awaiting the results of the disparity study. We've had conversations about crafting minority participation policy that would be established. And I think when we talk about, you know, waterfront And I think when we talk about, you know, waterfront development, that would all be something that would come into play when we identify, you know, criteria for selecting, you know, potential future development partners. So we've been working with the city attorney's office, the EDA, and we're working to craft a policy that we would implement so that if there were city incentives, resources that were being considered, that we would have a blueprint for how we would handle that and ensure that we had equity in in future projects. So that is something that is in the works. It is, of course, tied to the results of the disparity study, and the goal would be to build a framework around that based on what the report back is.
Right. Well, Mr. Tillage brought up the present disparity study. You already have a disparity study that was done, and so I don't know why you're waiting on the next one because the present one gave you directive and guidelines to follow. And and that's why I'm concerned that in sitting here listening, there was an absence of addressing any issues of equity. The information you present, even the mission statement, it speaks about revenue and building revenue for the city. The the issue has never been revenue, it's been the distribution of it that has been the problem. And I think when we come up here and we have nothing to say about equity and disparities that are glaring in this city, particularly, I I was concerned that you didn't even mention anything about minority contracting until page 12 of the report. And and on page 12 of the report, on page 12 of the report, it talks about providing $226,000 to MWBE participants, and it says that's a 93%. Can you put that, Ms. Hill, can you put that so that citizens can see? Page 12. And so this is the first mention of any type of minority participation in the whole presentation. And it comes talking about awarding 44 businesses $226,000, and then it says MWBE, Minority Women Business Enterprises, 93%. And you're talking $226,000, but yet on page three, Building Momentum, we're talking about projected annual revenue of 19.5 million. You're talking about 1.5 billion between 2017 and 2022. And then we come here to discuss a minority business, and we get excited over $226,000. And to me, that that is unacceptable. And then, when you even talk about it, there's no disaggregation of the data. It just says MWBE. I don't know what percentage of this 93% represents minority, and then even within minority, who is the minority? And so giving this sort of bland data without any type of plan, and there's no excuse to say you're waiting for the disparity study to come because we already had a disparity study. And when we talk about minority participation, and Mr. Tillage brought up the generational wealth project that's about to occur, it's going to be major wealth that's going to be made off of the development of downtown. And we have no type of conversation about minority participation. And so I'm concerned, I'm concerned about that because we had a report that was given to council by MGT when the last time Ms. Mitchell met. And the question of subcontractors, and and you have access to the previous study, and the previous study required Portsmouth to monitor who those subcontractors were, and it was ignored. And so when we get excited about all this business coming in and revenue, trickle-down economics doesn't work in our community. If it's not intentional, it's not going to get there. And so I'm disappointed in that we have not addressed the disparities and inequities in this report at all. Also, my second issue, on page number three, on page number three, when, first of all, the data that's presented about the number of jobs created between 2017 and 2022, what's the source of that data?
The data source for those numbers would be the the businesses that we were dealing with annually that are reflected in the.
So you, so so you you're saying that each of the businesses that you dealt with self-reported the number of jobs that they created?
Yes, they're verified through the Virginia Economic, Virginia Employment Commission, I'm sorry. So yes, we we have that information, it's accessible through the state of Virginia.
Right, so if.
But initial reports are are provided through the businesses that we're dealing with in terms of, you know, their job numbers, what they look to.
Right, so if those businesses can inform the city on the number of jobs they created, why is it that these contractors cannot provide the city with their sub-information? And I think that's something that as, and I'm talking about when you bring these primes in to do the work, why is it that we don't have data on who they subcontracted with, which is where many of our minority contractors enter into the participation picture? So if we can get this data, and and it needs to be in the front end of our contracts, which was recommended, it means it needs to be in the front end of contracts requiring those primes to do that. If they can give us the number of jobs they're creating, then they should be able to tell us who their subs are. The other issue is that you mentioned the jobs, but what types of jobs are these? You know, when you say 1,400 jobs in 2018, 1,800 jobs in 2019, 1,900 jobs 2020, what type of jobs are they? How have they been, have they been sustained? Do we know that? Are they sustainable jobs? What type of wages are they paying? Are they paying living wages? You see? So it's not enough just to say we created jobs, because it's not just a matter of just having a job, but people need to make living wages. And this does not give us that type of information, but the revenue is coming in. But we don't know if our citizens are are getting living wages, are they still employed? Okay? So I I believe if you have access to that information, that would be pertinent information for us to assess when when you have a graph like this, how do we really interpret these numbers? So when when you say, you know, 1,800 jobs in 2019, 1,900 jobs in 2020, are they still employed? You see? Because it's interesting, these were during some COVID times. And so that's a concern that I hope you can provide backup information, report back information to council instead of just giving us general numbers. Are these jobs sustainable? Are they living? Do we have any information on the wages, average wages? Is that possible?
To an extent, you know, some of that is proprietary, confidential, when you start talking about employee wages, but we do have access to the Virginia Employment Commission's data. They are the the source of that. There is information that they do release to the public, but there are some restrictions on that again. So we would have to, you know, look at, based on your request and the things that you've identified, we'd have to see exactly what resources, sources are out there in order to respond to that.
So so as part of economic development, we know that these contractors are making a lot of money. I think that we got to make sure, too, that our citizens are being paid fairly, treated fairly. And if if we don't have that data, then just knowing the revenue stream and then when we collect taxes and all and, you know, neighborhood enhancement and those things, if if we don't, if we don't know what's actually happening with that, then these numbers really don't mean a whole lot, other than that these contractors are doing very well. And I think that it needs to be more equity and and fairness, and I see that lacking in this report, and I hope that that is something that council takes a serious look at. The mission statement talks purely about the economic well-being and quality of life for the community. What do we mean by the economic well-being? And it just talks about jobs and a stable tax base. Got to be more than just jobs, that's to be paid. And so those are my comments, and I would hope, I would hope that the vision of economic development includes equity and fairness.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Donahue, excellent presentation. I thought, I thought you shared the information that Portsmouth is is growing, and I think our EDA board, which is volunteers, by the way, does an excellent job. I think your staff is certainly, as you mentioned, can celebrate the growth that we're seeing in our city. And you did a great job in, I think, outlining the strengths and opportunities. Didn't really touch base on weaknesses or threats, with the exception of inflation and its effect on the economy, which is certainly a threat. One thing, industrial park. I think the West Norfolk area is probably our one industrial park, if you want to define it as such. And I know there have been some challenges in attracting industry to that area due to infrastructure. Is that, or are those, in infrastructure, I mean, in utilities, water pressure? And I know one of the companies mentioned in the presentation to expand had to expend a lot of money to put their own water pressure system in place. I would like for management to share with council at a future meeting on what we need to do to make the West Norfolk area, the industrial area, more marketable so we can realize its full potential. I do think that area's got a lot of potential, a lot of it's been realized, and I think if we do our part, we can attract even more industry to that area. You also mentioned small businesses. I think all of us are aware that small businesses probably contribute a little less than 50% of the the nation's economy, and certainly, they contribute a lot to the local economy here. And I know, I think it was last year, we had an event for small businesses to, you know, come together and communicate and share with us their challenges and their opportunities. And in the past, we've had ambassador program. How do we communicate month to month, day to day, with the small businesses in our community? I think we all see as we travel throughout the city, you know, we see businesses opening. We also unfortunately see some go out of business. So how are we communicating? And when I think communicating, we have some good things coming up where small businesses could utilize, as in broadband technology. How are we communicating with them so they don't feel like the the lone ranger in dealing with inflation, dealing with employment situations?
We we are present, we are in the community, we are speaking to those businesses.
How does that manifest itself? We have people actually knocking on doors, making phone calls? How is that?
We we do, yes, sir. You know, first and foremost, we are present with a number of organizations that represent those those businesses in the community. So think of your Hampton Roads Chamber, Black Brand, which is the region's equivalent to the Black Chamber of Commerce, Old Town Business Association, Portsmouth Partnership. We are members, we participate in their meetings, we have staff that is is there with them for their educational cohorts, networking events we attend. But beyond that, you know, one of the goals of business retention is that we're in your business at least once a year if we can be there. So we have staff dedicated to that effort, where there's business outreach that's being done daily. We meet with no less than several business businesses any given day, and the goal is to be in front of them in their place of of business, to learn about what they're doing, determine how we can support them, what resources they may need, what challenges they may be working to overcome, so that we can help, almost like a concierge-level type of service that we provide. And that's something we do for any business. It doesn't matter if you are a a large company or you're somebody just starting out. We're accessible. So, you know, I think if there's anything to to leave with today is that, you know, the public, the community present and watching, they know where to where to find us and the resources that we have to support them with. But we are present, we're in the community, we're always looking to do better. The marketing campaign is a way we're looking to do that, to get get our voice out there that, you know, we're accessible and we're here to support.
Okay. Also, the Hampton Roads Alliance, how how much assistance are we getting from from the Alliance in helping us attract businesses to our city?
So we've recently rejoined as a member this fiscal year, and we're beginning the process of kind of getting back up to speed with them. So we're participating in marketing missions, different events, you know, they're they're marketing Portsmouth now, or just previously, that was not occurring. So, you know, we expect to receive a return on that investment here very soon.
Yeah, and I think it would be good if we have a presentation in the near future from the Alliance to show how how that return on investment's going to manifest itself. And and I'm glad to see a timetable for waterfront development, although I'm a little cynical, not because anything that economic development has done, because of past councils. And, you know, as councils change, unfortunately, we've had some great plans, I've shared some of those with my colleagues, great plans that never came to fruition because councils changing and people having a different idea of what they want on the waterfront. And and with that said, I know there have been some impediments as as to some of the existing infrastructure there that we've had to deal with, but we also have, as you mentioned, the former Six Acre Holiday Insight. And my my message is not necessarily to you, but to council, I think it's important that you and your EDA team get direction from our city. A timeline is nice, but you need to know what we want. And there needs to be some some buy-in where if council changes every couple of years, we're not going to put out a new plan. Some of those plans could. Some of those plans could probably be as tall as that lectern there. And those plans represent a lot of money. So we need, as a council, to decide what we want and have the fortitude to stick to it, in maybe some way from a staff or even a legal standpoint, where, once we decide to go in a direction, it's not gonna be up to a whim of, of a council to drastically change that. And I, I know that one council can bind another council, but somewhere along the line, these vacant parcels have stayed vacant because of city councils, not because of necessarily anything that economic development has done. The, I was also glad to hear you mention Craddock, that, that Afton area. I think that represents a good opportunity, maybe more from the residential standpoint than what its past history was, as far as being a self-contained community. The George Washington Corridor, I know Ryan Holmes, how, how complete is that project? And how are the, how's the real estate moving?
I'm told it's moving very, very quickly. I believe the project is at least 50% complete. When, when built out, it will be 176 new single-family homes. I believe they're selling as, as quickly as they can build them. And I think there's a desire to do more on their part, as well as other residential builders in, in the region. But my understanding is their sales are going quite well. We would hope to see, you know, that as a catalyst for other growth and investment along the George Washington Corridor, which, quite frankly, could use it.
The, the other thing, our comp plan, which, you know, I think each of us hear from citizens, boy, we've got too many car washes, we've got too many of this, we've got too many of that. As you know, the comprehensive plan kind of outlaw, outlines what, what's a good fit in, in different areas. And how much is that taken into consideration? I know, I know it's required by law that we have to update that periodically. And when we're, when we're out, and your people out marketing our city, is that being used as a guideline?
It, it is. The comp plan and zoning are really two of the first things that we consider when we're looking at a potential location for a, a project, or, or a business, yes, absolutely.
Because the, the city, and I think Councilman Hugel and others mentioned the retirement piece, retirement community. But, you know, as I look at the Victory Development, particularly the Lowe's parcel that some of us remember as the Tower Mall area, there's still a lot of vacant parcels over there. Any, any future development that you can share of interest there?
Not at this time. There's some activity and movement there. I think the Housing Authority has recently sold some of the land it, it owned to a development group, but I don't have anything, anything I can update you on this evening.
But there, there again, I think the numbers are important. I think the growth is important. And when you're talking about private industry, you know, it's only so much government input that you can have. I think in today's labor market, I think wages are probably higher than they've ever been. Unfortunately, the cost of living is too. But I think we, we have to realize that the private sector, you know, they hire people that they feel are qualified, and they pay people based on their ability to retain workers with skills. So I think that's, that's something that economic development has a limited leverage on, quite frankly, other than initially attracting businesses that we know historically pay good wages, like, like the maritime businesses that y'all have been successful in bringing to our city. But I, I want to thank you and EDA and your staff for the job they do day in and day out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I gotta admit, we probably should, should've just had this on the agenda, because I got a lot of questions, but for time purposes, I really got 18. But for time purposes, I'm not going to ask those questions, so I'll write them to you.
Thank you, sir.
From, from your presentation, as you know, people having somewhere to live, work, and play is very important. I think that's one of the biggest reasons why people move outside the city, or go to other cities for entertainment and things of that nature. I didn't see anything in the presentation that discussed those things, and what are we doing to, to bring people to the city as far as entertainment? Because we do need those tax dollars, especially since we, from what I saw, there's not a lot of living wage opportunities mentioned in this presentation. So we have to sup, supplement that with people coming to the city, spending money here, so that we can get some of those opportunities. So, so my question is, what are we doing to bring, one, big businesses here? Because I understand the importance of small businesses, but one of the things for me is, when I go to a city, if I'm going to a Texas Roadhouse, and Texas Roadhouse may be packed. So then, because I'm going there for that, I'll go to a smaller business down there, and then because their food may be good, or because the entertainment they're doing may be good, I'll come back later and continue to spend my dollars. I know we focus a lot on making sure we have small businesses, but especially with a tunnel and a lack of things to do, what are we doing to attract big businesses here, so we can get people here, so that they can learn about a lot of the small businesses that we have? Because a lot of the small businesses we have are frequent by Portsmouth people, and not by Norfolk people, Chesapeake people, Suffolk people, et cetera, et cetera.
Great, great questions, and, you know, retail opportunities and entertainment opportunities are definitely something that we're interested in, focused on, not necessarily a targeted industry, because for us, we're, you know, we're looking at high volume, high growth, high job creation numbers, high revenue generating numbers. But it is something that we are focused on. There's a number of things that we're doing that, you know, don't make the chart as a targeted industry, but we're working towards. So, you know, the Entertainment District is a fantastic location for those types of businesses to be in, and we're seeing that now. So we're seeing, you know, I can't get into specifics, but businesses that are in that entertainment realm, businesses that are, you know, in the dining, retail space, that, that want to be in Portsmouth. We talk about the waterfront, I think there's an excellent opportunity for, you know, entertainment to be a component of that. You know, the comments about senior housing, I think that's an excellent opportunity for that to be a component of that. As it relates to, you know, job creation, we are going after those, those big businesses, you know, those whales, if you will. So if you're talking about, you know, Fairlead Integrating, creating 225 jobs just out, out the window here, Siemens-Gomezza, you know, their 310 jobs is what they're looking to bring to the region. You know, the casino coming to Portsmouth, 1,300 jobs, you know, those are big job numbers. The goal is to, to transition that and, and turn that into, you know, new families residing in Portsmouth that will support new retail, new commercial, entertainment establishments as well. Everything's tied together, it's all linked.
So, so for me, because in my opinion, you kind of didn't answer my question. So I, I say, because you said we, we have to, we have to get these businesses and stuff to get people to come live in Portsmouth. The truth is, is that most of the time, we are going out of the city and supporting these businesses, so the need is already here. It's not like it's not a need for those type of businesses to be here. When it comes to entertainment, a movie theater, or, or going skating, or just simple things, we're going to Virginia Beach, we're going to Suffolk, we're going to Norfolk, we're going here, the, the need is already here, because people are already leaving. When I go to Suffolk, to a restaurant, I see people in churchland at the Suffolk restaurants. So I know that the need's here, we don't need the, the housing to, to, for the need, it's already here. Because people, the thing about it is that people want to have fun. To go back to the casino, how, how much, I know that we discussed revenue, but how much revenue have we made off the casino right now? If you, maybe you don't know that answer, and you can get back to me later, but...
No, I, I can provide that to you right now, if you, just give me just a moment. So effective as of July, which is the last date the Lottery Board has reported out, Rivers Casino has generated just over $8.5 million in revenue to the city of Portsmouth. So it's still looking five months out for the rest of the calendar year. That's ranging anywhere from 1.2 to just shy of 1.5 million per month. So I would expect, you know, looking forward, it's going to far exceed the projections that were established when, you know, we were entertaining the project prior to its approval. So eight and a half million dollars, I answered your question, as of July, is, is the revenue, new revenue that was generated? That's just gaming revenue, so what that's not gonna count is real estate tax, food and beverage sales, which, you know, the commission revenues does track that as well. So that's strictly gaming revenue. I believe we're gonna hit that $16 million goal that everybody was, was expecting to receive. We're well on our way to that, and, you know, we still have five months to go in terms of the reporting.
So with the 19.5, I'm just trying to make sure I understand that clearly, that's all revenue being projected, including the casino, the 19.5 annual revenue?
No, that's just based on the investment of the 1.5 billion, so that's just a, in terms of capital investment, in most cases, that's real estate, doesn't include things like your BPO taxes, you know, food and beverage sales, just depending on, you know, the individual businesses that would fall within that overall number. But that 19.5 is based on projected real estate tax revenue alone. So there's, there's other revenues that would be on top of that.
And, and I'm, I'm trying to cut it, I just got a couple of, I'm trying to cut it. When I was, when I was running for office in 2020, I remember a, a news report, and maybe you don't know, maybe this something that need to come out later, a news report that with the, the Starbucks and the Chipotle, that we was also getting a Zaxby's. Is that not in the plan anymore?
Still in the plan, it's taking a little bit longer than anticipated. In addition to the Zaxby's, I can share that we do have a healthcare business that will also be locating on the Seaboard Common site, there at Frederick and Turnpike, which will be the last out parcel. So Humana Healthcare will be coming to Portsmouth, locating on Seaboard as well. But I do believe that the Zaxby's is still moving forward, it's just they're moving at a much slower pace. But that's not something that's within our control, that's between them and the development.
So my last question, as I promised, this is my last question. I got, I got so many. But as, as far as revenue, I know that we talk about revenue, but the citizens continue to complain about taxes and taxes and taxes. My question is, is there a certain number that we're looking at? And if possible, what's that number for us to actually lower those taxes? Because in the last couple of years, we've constantly raised taxes, we've raised the, the public utilities, we've raised so many things, and I hear that we're doing so much investment in businesses and things of that nature, but I'm not seeing that when it comes to my pocketbook. Honestly, I know, I know if I don't pay my bills, I'll be on the news, so I pay them. But when can we see a decrease in those things? When, what's the number?
Well, I'll say this real quick, but, and then, and I do welcome an opportunity for me, you, and Brian to sit down, because, because you have so many questions, I would love a one-on-one, and we can really go through some things, because I know you have 18. So, but, just as a heads up...
And I ain't answered, I ain't asked none of them, this has been all new.
Yeah, I would welcome, I think it's a great opportunity to sit down and really be able to talk and go through some information, because it allows you an opportunity to ask those questions without it being a public work session, even though I believe citizens want to know, because they ask you in the street. But I think it would be a great opportunity to give you a one-on-one with our Economic Development Authority, and we can have those conversations about budget. Because remember, we took a decrease of five cents on this tax rate, understanding and estimating that we would receive additional revenue from the casino. We did a comprehensive, well, our compression pay for public safety, based on some income that we were receiving from the casino. We were able, we have an additional for the utilities. We have changed some of the process and the structure for utilities in order to capture that income, that we have been really leaving that on the table, because of our billing history and cycle. So we have a lot of things, one, reduction of debt. So some of the things that we're able to do with additional income coming in, is not have to go after debt. You don't have to take a loan out if you have the cash to, to do these projects. So, again, I would love that opportunity, because I think it's a great opportunity for us to really get into those hard questions that you have and provide answers. And, and I know we have a clock, because I know you, you asked for that. So, okay, but we have only 30 minutes, so...
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and I agree, this probably should've been just one work session by itself, but Mr. Brian Donahue, I'll applaud you and your team of four, soon to be nine, for the work that you all have done, as far as the growth over the past six years. As a former member of the EDA, we didn't have this many resources to be able to work with. So I can see how the growth has changed over the past 13 years, from my time of serving on that commission to this current time. You answered one of my questions. Of course, our concern is about being able to have babies delivered here. I don't know when is the last time we can say that a baby was delivered in Portsmouth, so what does that do for our statistical records of saying that, you know, how many babies were born in Portsmouth? I can say that I was proudly born in Portsmouth in 1963, but how many other mothers are gonna be able to say that in the future? Our next question is about the unsolicited proposals versus the solicited proposals. So you're recommending that the solicited proposal for seeking out developers is the best route? I know that we had two in the past, that both, you know, were denied or failed, didn't go through whatever that purpose is. So the RFP process is what you're recommending should be the route that we should go to develop our waterfront? Is that your question?
No, because we were doing a study.
Okay.
And we will come back with this, because at some point, I know we've all, you've all requested, not you've all, but a few, one, have requested a retreat. So what we want to be able to do is address some of those things, but we thought it was, it made more sense for the market study to come from Economic Development Authority. And they were gracious enough to cover that study, so that we would have some pertinent information to allow us to make some decisions. And I think that would definitely give us the segue into your thing. We will never go and do anything without council's input on such a project, such as downtown development. But those are just some things that have to be addressed first, so you'll be able to market what you want, or know what is a request from the citizens to say, this is what we would like to see.
Right, okay. And the, the Humana, Humana Health is gonna be kind of like our patient first, so we could go there?
Medical office.
Okay.
I don't have all the details yet, but this is very recently learned.
Sure. And the, the hotels that are gonna be coming in the Entertainment District, so is Rivers Casino gonna have their section of what they're gonna do, and the city of Portsmouth will have some that they will bring onsite, or you're partnering together? How is that gonna play out?
So Rivers does have a, a plan for its own hotel, Casino Hotel, but we're seeing interest from other parties that would like to be, you know, in proximity to the casino, I'll say that.
Right, okay.
So those would be different enti- So those, those would be different entities, uh, that we're seeing.
Different entities that we could look at, yeah. And I had a couple more questions, but I guess I need to get on the one-on-one list too, so, so that we can get more understanding with it. But thank you for the presentation and we look forward to future growth.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and this has been a very robust. I, I see I have a couple colleagues, but I'm going to ask my colleagues to suspend the questions at this time. We still have another agenda items that are very important. We have a public safety report that we need to get to. So in the interest of this, I think as we move forward, the best route is probably a recommendation of Councilman Tillage to have that retreat with the council to deal with these matters and have you come in and speak directly to the council. And we could spend eight hours of going through this information. So based on that, I think we need to suspend this discussion and, and I'll have the last comment, um, on, on this matter.
Just a question. I just have a question.
Go, go ahead with your.
I just have a question, uh, mayor. Um, if we have additional questions that aren't very long and involving, uh, Mr. Donahue will be here for the regular meeting? Will you be here for the regular meeting?
Is he?
No, that wasn't my understanding.
So, so you, you're not going to be present during our regular meeting? I thought I normally see you at our regular meetings.
I don't believe I have an agenda item on this.
No, you, you don't.
But I, I am from time to time, yes, sir.
You're not available for the regular meeting?
Um, if the manager desires me to, I, I can certainly be here.
Why, why would you, why would you not want him to be at a regular meeting if I have a question I want to ask?
He's not on the.
It isn't, uh, well, Mr. Moody doesn't have to coach you. He doesn't, he, he doesn't have to be on the, this is our economic development person. We can't ask him a question during a regular meeting? Doesn't have to be. The item submitted, I can ask it during item submitted.
Brian, um.
It's not an involved.
Was not, would not be available for the seven o'clock meeting because we have a few other items and he, I want to make sure whatever questions you have, he's prepared to answer. And we have several items that we need to go through, so he won't be available.
So, so you're, as a city manager, you're going to tell your employee not to be available to answer a question of council?
I asked my employee not to be. Correct, correct, absolutely right.
Excuse me, sir. As the city manager, she does have the authority to direct her staff and what she has explained to you.
Well, I understood what she explained. I don't need you to interpret it. I understood it, understood it very well.
I'm glad you don't need that.
Thank you.
In, in any event, sir, before you sit down, I, I want to say something to you. After listening to all of the dialogue, first, you previously, the last year and a half, have been operating with a team of two. And as a result, we have scaled up and you have gotten a team of five. The work that you have done in your department not only is exemplary, is, is, it is extraordinary. Now let me explain to you. I am a minority-owned, SWAM-certified, hundred percent African-American-owned business, and I will be celebrating twenty years of running my business here in the city of Portsmouth. The work that you have done with groups like Black Brand, with Bloom, and collaboration in bringing more minority businesses to this city. What a lot of people may not be aware, but I am because I'm in those meetings and I come to those locations to check on our small businesses. Bloom has ninety-three percent, ninety-three percent of the individuals in Bloom co-working space, which was just started less than two years ago, are African-American, mostly men, women, and small businesses. In addition to that, no one is compelled, EDA doesn't compel people or, or, or your department doesn't compel people to go into business. Small business is a risk and your office supports minority, small business participation in those risks. So much so, Black Brand, who you just named, many other organizations have had cohorts in the city of Portsmouth. And I can tell you from being in the participation of those, ninety-eight percent of those businesses that went through those cohorts, year-to-date, over sixty new African-American small businesses in the city of Portsmouth were right here in the city of Portsmouth. And they're operating and you and Black Brand and other organizations are providing resources and support for those organizations to grow. I applaud you. I would ask that you continue to do the work that you are doing. We are not where we desire to be, but we are not where we were before. Thank you, sir. That concludes your comments. Have a nice evening.
Our next presentation is by Dr. Margaret Buxton for the Idababa Early Learning Center. And Dr. Buxton, you have a, uh, little thing to be able to go to your next slide.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. I'm here this evening to present a presentation on Idababa Early Learning Center and to ask you for some assistance in that regards. Okay, the first presentation here is a picture of, um, our, our center's website. The old one, there's a new one up now, but anyway. First, I'm going to talk a, a little bit about my professional biography. For those of you who don't know anything about me or why I would be standing up here talking about a daycare center. Then a little history about Idababa, the purpose of the need, the requests that I'm asking for, and some daycare center facts. I've been a longtime resident and educator in the city of Portsmouth. Um, lived here since nineteen seventy-nine, seventy-six, something like that. Um, children went to school here. And I've always wanted to be a part of the educational factor. I have a degree in early childhood from Hampton Institute at the time, a master's from Hampton University, and a doctorate from the George Washington University. And all of my years, um, have been doing something with the love and passion of children and education. I retired from Portsmouth in twenty thirteen after forty-some years in education. Not just in Portsmouth, the last ten years were in Portsmouth. Um, and after I retired, I was able to get back to the love of just being passionate about early childhood. And that's talking about the infants. These are children who are in range of six weeks. At the time, it was seven years old, now we go to four-year-olds. You know, because this is the starting of the earliest brain development with the nurturing and love, and they're like sponges, that they can grow and develop, which would be a factor in how they become prominent citizens within our city. Okay. The late Ms. Ida B. Barber began her school in nineteen-ten. And she was, um, took in indigent children, she and her mother. And she reached out into the community, which she's had a lot of help in trying to get the citizens to help her with these children. And throughout that, she took in all kinds of children, um, that needed someone to live, someone to care for them. And that's how her school started. Um, she did that until nineteen-twenty-five, and that's when she passed away. But her legacy continued. It has continued in this city for all of those years. We are still in operation. And Idababa used to be called Miller Day and Nursery. I don't know if you're familiar with that. And many of our citizens, prominent citizens in this community now went through Miller Day and Idababa. She had a, their Idababa has a statue here. Um, there was a Idababa Housing Development. And we have our daycare, daycare center, um, which has had different locations in, in the city. But now we're at fourteen-hundred Camden Avenue, which is right off of Duke, on the corner of Duke and Camden, off of Elm Avenue. For your information, probably can read, it's a little blurred there, but in our, the Library of Congress, the United States Congress, Idababa's daycare is listed at the first, is listed as the first black daycare in the state of Virginia. And, and has been, um, prominent through all those years. And the purpose of me staying in here today is because I'm concerned that that legacy is not going to be able to continue. The history of Idababa, as I just mentioned, it works in the lower-income community. And it, it has worked with, um, the impoverished community in helping to provide that nurturing and love for children as they grow and develop in our ci, in our city. Where ninety percent of families are low-income. And as I said, many of the citizens received their start in Idababa. The purpose of this presentation is to apprise you of the critical need for daycare, not only in our city, but as I guess you watch the news, everywhere. Daycare is in a critical situation. And I'm going to request some financial support from the city to help us to continue to operate effectively and prevent the possible future closing of this longstanding icon in the community. Some of the key factors which prompts this presentation today is the demand for infant and toddler care exceed supply. There are documented facts of the benefits of brain development and early learning and healthy nutrition, which is what we focus on. The ability to compensate and maintain current staff with competitive wages. The shortage of qualified applicants. The rebuilding efforts as a result of the pandemic's effect on this daycare. The operational and maintenance, maintenance expenses exceed income. And the need to continue to support the families in the community with affordable and quality daycare. On behalf of the Board of Directors and the families and staff of Idababa, we're asking the city to financially help us to remain an integral part in the community. With its rich history and the legacy of Idababa, we are asking for some, uh, financial assistance so that we can continue to survive. It is our hope that the city council will appreciate the value of this longstanding historic institution and find some way to help us. This page talks about some of the facts of daycare and the shortage and the need and the cost of what's, what's imposing upon all of the families in our community now to find, pay for, and maintain affordable and credible daycare. The barriers to this, of course, is the lack of availability, the expense, the support for multiple children, the hours and the location. The babies are out there, I have a long waiting list. And it just really touches me when I have to tell the parents that call, we don't have any room. I can't take anymore. Some of the progress that they're trying to make with daycare and some of the future steps. I know I kind of went through that rather quickly and I didn't want to read it, I kind of wanted to talk, but I just want to take a minute and just talk from my heart, okay? Um, it is very difficult to try to run an organization. And we are a small, black, nonprofit organization. I've only been there, I only went there in twenty-twenty. I did a stint there in twenty-eighteen for several months while they were looking for a director. And I went in there and helped out. And then that didn't work out, the director left. I went back in twenty-twenty to try to help rebuild and bring Idababa back to where it could be, uh, continue to be a nurturing environment for the children. The families are so needy and the children are so beautiful. And, you know, you know, we try to provide not just the care, but we work with the families, you know? I'm asking you all for help, but I ask everybody, everywhere I go. I've gotten, you know, some grants, I've gotten some, some, some donations, you know? I'm out there trying to keep this school open. A year ago, a year or so ago, I did get, well, when, when the pandemic was in, you know, we got the, the grants that kept us, the, the loans, and they were, the loans forgiven, so that kept us open. And then the, the year right after that, I got a large grant from the state of Virginia. We are licensed by the Department of Education. But last year, we didn't get any money. And we had to go into our savings, we had to go into our CDs, just to try to keep the school open. This year, I have gotten some grants. We are, we are doing a little bit better, but as you can see, we are going to be short this year. You can't take in less than what you need to spend out. We have a shortage, we need teachers. We have, if I had more teachers, then I could pay more teachers and then I could have more children. And that's our income is the children. We work with the Department of Social Services, um, you know, and they certainly provide for tho, the children in that regards. I don't have any self-pay parents right now. The self-pay, I didn't mention it there, but the self-pay for infant care is three hundred and seventy-five dollars a week. You know, nine, many people can afford that, you know? Um, so the families that do come to us are the families that need us. They need, need to be able to provide somewhere where their children can go, that the, they're going to get the support. They can go out and find a job or they can do what they can need to do and know that their children are safe. Um, I've gotten a couple of good grants. I got a grant from, um, the Beasley Foundation. I got a grant from the Blocker Foundation. I'm working with, um, Nora, another network of advocacy, regional advocacy, which is working directly with the families. I've got a partnership with Norfolk State. I mean, I am doing everything that I can, but it's just not enough. And I just thought I'd come here today to talk to you as the city council and looking at this Idababa Early Learning Center, which has a legacy in this community. If you can find some way to just help us to continue to, you know, to pay the salaries, to pay the operational expenses, we, we need about twenty-five thousand a month. I mean, yeah, a month, but we're bringing in maybe fifteen. So as you continue doing that, you're going to lose money as you go through the year, you know? So, um, that's why I'm here today and that's what I'm reaching out to you. I don't know if you have any suggestions, if you have any ways we can get some money, if you can help us with some money. And I'm willing to, to do whatever I can to keep this center open.
Thank you, thank, thank you, ma'am. And we do have a couple of questions from my colleagues on council. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Uh, Dr. Buxton, um, I hope the assistance is there that you can get. I'm curious, um, what is the criteria for the city to provide the type of support that Dr. Buxton is requesting? And the re, and the reason I'm saying this, um, is because, uh, uh, not sure if you're aware of it, but the city has supported private entities, uh, that have not contributed anything close to what Idababa has done. The city supported a Cock Island Boat Race for years, which was nothing but a party for boat owners. And the city paid for it, okay, for years, okay? The question that, the, the question that the city manager didn't want me to follow up on, I, I just wanted to ask Mr. Donahue if the Hampton Roads Alliance is a private business? Is it a private business?
Sir, 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 we're not, we're, we're not entertaining, we're not entertaining that right now.
So, so the Hampton Roads Alliance is a private business that we, as a council, fund in our budget, okay? So the, the question becomes who gets funded and what's the criteria? And if you were listening to the presentation, uh, there was a comment made by the Economic Development Director that they're getting back into the alliance, okay? And there was no evidence of anything that had been done by the alliance for the city in attracting business, but yet money was given to them. And so I hope you do get it because, um, what I'm trying to share with you is that the city spends its money where it wants to spend it, okay? And it's available, but it's certain people and good old boys that get it, okay? And so I'm just sharing that with you, so you don't think that this is some major request you're asking, okay? It, it, it's just a matter of who does it and who gets it. And when you elect a council and you get certain people on council, that determines whether those requests are approved or not.
Thank, thank you, sir. Council, Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I just want to say, Ms. Buxton, that you didn't have to, um, prove anything to me. I fully support the, um, the ask and I hope that we provide that opportunity for you. You guys have done some amazing things in the, the city of Portsmouth. So I'm a hundred percent behind the ask that you're asking for. And I hope, I hope that as, um, as a council, that we, um, support that so that you can get that, so we can help more kids in the city.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, thank you, Dr. Buxton, for the presentation. I, I know your work. Um, I was there last year for a fundraising effort that you. I was there last year for a fundraising effort that you did. And some of the churches came together with Senator Lucas, and those funds were there. But we need to find a path that's going to be more consistent. So I guess I would ask the city manager, is there a way that we could look into some type of revenue sharing or some kind of support? Because this is here in our school. And my nephew went to the Miller Day Nursery, and he's right now a longshoreman, doing quite well with a house over in Newport and a family. And, you know, this is, you know, it's like the Stop Organization or the Stop Inc. programs. This is where our children get that early foundations. This is where the families who need that assistance get that help. And if we can't do it for any other center that is historically recognized, like Idababa here in the city of Portsmouth, who else are we going to do that for? So I don't know if we need a consensus for us to do this, or city manager, how the process should we go. But I'm in support of supporting the Idababa Early Learning Center.
I'm so glad you all say that, because the reason Dr. Buxton is here is because she came in, her husband came and met with me and was, were very compelling and told me their story and the history. But I wanted to get it in front of the community in case the community was not aware of the history. And another thing that I wanted to add as a part of that is because we have our workforce development. And our workforce development is in need of daycare. So it was in hopes that they could partner in some way. So one, when we have our citizens or our, in workforce development, they could also have a level of partnership with Idababa Daycare Early Learning Center to give them some relief on that. It was considered a relationship, a partnership, that we could build, because it actually provides a need for both. It satisfies a need for both. So since council is interested, I will be providing council some information to provide direction and if we would like to fund Dr. Buxton's early learning and where we would pull those dollars from.
Thank you, Madam Manager. And everyone has already spoken. And in the interest of time, this will be the last comment on this topic. What I want to say to you, Dr. Buxton, is both of my children attended Idababa Early Learning Center when it was Miller Home and Day Nursery. Idababa was the first African American woman entrepreneur in the state of Virginia to open up such a facility. Our daughter today is a licensed attorney in three states. Our son is a healthcare professional with a degree. I served on the board of Miller Home and Day Nursery. We love Miller Home and Day Nursery, Nursery now Idababa Early Learning Center. But I would also advocate and ask you to advocate, this is not just a local problem. This is a national and statewide problem. And we all need to advocate, not just in a local level, but we, as citizens of Portsmouth, need to go to our General Assembly. I've read some data on the disparities in terms of what people have to pay for childcare, and it's unaffordable. And you're absolutely right. So this council is a council of conscience, and we will do what is right. The only other thing I would ask you, as you look forward, there are some other resources that are out there, and I'd like to sit down with you and kind of get you connected with some local resources. And one thing I do want to add in closing, which is important, when we get sidebar stuff from people up here on the dais, and sometimes people say things, but it's not 100% accurate. We have to put out, we're responsible for putting out accurate information. And this is not a knock against Miller Home and Day Nursery, or Idababa Early Learning Center. We are working together collaboratively to meet the needs of our community. And the Hampton Roads Alliance is a business organization that all the cities participate in regionally to bring business to the region and to the specific participant localities. It is not a good old boy network. It is a business network of which I support, and I think smart people that want to grow an economy, because at the end of the day, if we're going to help Idababa Learning Center, don't we need resources?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for your time.
Question was, was it a private entity, not a business entity?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. So, ladies and gentlemen, because we had an extended discussion on our economic development portion, and it was productive, however, it took more time than what was normally allotted. In any event, we normally would start our regular meeting at 7:00. We do have a presentation on the status and update of our crime statistics, which we believe is very important to our citizens and our city. And I would just ask you to show a little bit of patience while we ask our next proposal or presenter, Chief Jenkins, to come forward and present. And then after that, we will have a need to go into a closed session and, right, and we have a resolution, and then we will have our regular meeting. So I apologize for the delay. We weren't anticipating this. However, I would ask that you please be patient with us. This is not a normal occurrence. But we want to get the information to the citizens. But I would ask that you all give me the agreement that we can move forward.
Mayor?
I do have a statement, because this, this really is a discussion that probably could take hours, just like the economic development part was. And I don't want that to be lost on this conversation, because it's very important. If possible, and it's up to council, could we just do a special meeting for this, to discuss this? Because I don't want us to have to rush this. And this was my ask, but I don't want us to have to rush. And I feel like we're going to have to rush, because every, every subject has been so far cut. And I know council members are going to want to have to ask their important questions regarding this situation. So if this is the will of council, I'm okay with hopefully doing this in a special meeting, so we can give this the importance that it need. Because I'm sure this can go, this one, this particular topic, and what's going on in the city, we can talk about this probably for a good hour or two. And I don't, and also.
I think that's a fair request, Councilman. And so based upon the Councilman's request, if I, if we could, I would ask that we give a showing of consensus of moving this particular meeting on the status crime update to a special meeting. And that timeframe will be determined once we get with the clerk and see what the next available date could be. Is that acceptable to everyone? Can I get a show of hands to move forward with that? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir. Sorry about your time.
Madam Manager, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one more quick work session from the Legal Department regarding a resolution that's going to be important for the Portsmouth City Broadband Network Authority. Just as a quick overview, and I'm going to pass down, I think you all have an old version of the resolution, the Articles of Incorporation. I'm going to pass down, and that was one quick change. But what happened is in the, the, and Kelsey, I don't want to take your, I'm going to pass this up to Kelsey Swaranga, who will guide you through exactly what you need to know to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, this will be very quick. In the previous couple sessions of the PCBNA, the PCBNA asked to make some changes to the Articles of Incorporation and the City Code. So what's going to pass around are the proposed, let me use it here a little bit better. What's getting passed around are the proposed changes to the articles. And then you already had copies in your packet of the proposed changes to the City Code to reflect these changes. So there's changes, first prohibit council members from being appointed to the authority. Second, explicitly give council the power to remove members. And third, remove the requirement that members be residents, business owners, or property owners in the city of Portsmouth. So this isn't for consideration at today's meeting. It will be considered at the September 26th meeting, where there would be a public hearing, as is required by the Virginia Code, to consider the amended articles. After that hearing, you then would vote to either adopt, to adopt the articles and/or adopt the code amendment. And I just want to also clarify that nothing in these documents, if they are adopted, would require council to remove themselves as members of the authority. It just says that they cannot be appointed in the future. So it wouldn't create this void in the authority. You could take your time to find successors.
So essentially, what this is, is based on your ask as the authority, we've provided the changes in both the Articles of Incorporation, which is required by statute, as well as our City Code. If there are any changes that need to be made to this language, we'd ask that you take a look at it to let us know. You will vote on it as a body at the next council meeting. But this is just to give you the language that's required based on the recommendations made at the authority, and we'll move on from there, all right? Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. And Madam City Manager, does that conclude your agenda?
That concludes my agenda, but I have my items that I need to read.
Please read them. Please read your summary.
CMR 23-280, from City Attorney, adoption of ordinance confirming the 24 class and pay plan. 23-281, 294,852, adoption of ordinance for the behavioral health care development and development services. 23-282, 290,558, adoption of ordinance accepting step VA funding for behavioral health care. 82,778, adoption of ordinance accepting settlement funds for national opioid settlement for behavioral health care. 23-284 for behavioral health care. It's a performance service contract for the Portsmouth Department of Behavioral Health Care Services. 23-285, public utilities, adoption of ordinance for a utility easement. 23-282, 286, City Attorney, adoption of a resolution requesting General Assembly to amend charter of the city of Portsmouth for Section 3-02.
Thank you, ma'am. And we do have a need for a closed session. And Vice, Vice Mayor, would you please read the closed session motion?
Yes, I have that. I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, subsection 2.2-3711A.7, for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body specifically regarding Swinson versus City of Portsmouth, Portsmouth Circuit Court Case Number CL23000577-00.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Would you please vote electronically?
The item is adopted, 7-0.
We are now in closed session.
... by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered, and the closed meeting just concluded.
Second.
I would ask my colleagues to vote electronically.
This item is adopted, 7-0.
That concludes our early work session, and we will reconvene at 7:43.